Thank you, we are adjourned.
Please come to order for the November 4th special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members Devine?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Nadarian?
Here.
Weaver? And Mayor Sinanian?
Here. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for November 4th, 2014, special public meeting of City Council was posted on Thursday, October 30th, 2014, on bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's the first thing on the agenda?
Item one, General Manager of GWP, Assessment of Three Energy Transactions. One A, Motion Authorizing Execution of an Agreement Changing to Counterparty from Staler Energy to Macquarie Energy LLC.
Yes, Mr. Zern, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is, the item before you is a request that has been made by Skyler Energy, who we have an agreement with, essentially a sell agreement with, where they are purchasing coal-fired power from us and selling it out of the state of California. It's a 10-year agreement. They have approached us as they would like to assign this agreement to another firm, Macquarie Energy. This is a very large firm, they're actually part of what is called the Macquarie Group. They are housed in, or their home base is in Sydney, Australia. It's a large investment banking firm. Macquarie Energy is a Houston-based subsidiary of theirs that specializes in energy trading. Essentially, what you have is a company looking for a good, solid trading deal, and another company, Skyler, who is in a growth mode and looking for cash. That's essentially what it comes down to. And the ironic thing is, Skyler looking for cash to grow, primarily to build power generation facilities. We also just recently signed an agreement with them to buy solar power over 25 years. So we'll be a beneficiary of their growth and their development of these power generation facilities. So this was, in essence, a pretty clean deal. The only sticking point for us was that Skyler, as a smaller company, had agreed to put money in the bank, our bank. And we were allowed to collect interest off that, and those were their payments for the energy they were purchasing from us. Macquarie, a much larger company, highly rated on the exchange and by the rating agencies, wasn't desirous of putting their cash in our bank, would rather give us a parental guarantee, which is equally, if not better, for the overall project. However, we had said we were going to collect interest off that money over the life of the agreement, and therefore, we were at a loss of about $750,000 in interest that we would have collected. Both firms agreed to honor that, so they will, they will be giving the city or leaving in the bank $759,000, I think is the exact amount. So we will be whole on that interest payment. Macquarie will take over. All the other terms of the agreement are the same. They'll give us a parental guarantee, which guarantees the contract, and we are good to go from there. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
With the record, please reflect, I came out of the back room. I am here, and I'll move 1A.
Second.
Okay. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Nadarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
And Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Zern. Next item, please.
Item two, Director of Community Development, Regarding Citibank Project Located at 201 West Lexington Drive. Two A, Motion Approving Stage One and Two Design. Two B, Motion Approving Instrument Imposing Communities on Real Property.
Mr. Cho?
Yes, sir, this is the consideration of the replacement project. As you recall, or you may recall, design, the Phase One design review for the previously considered project, which was, as Mr. Kiesel will outline for you, significantly larger, was brought forward to you. It was halted amid the Stage Two environmental review, and during that point, the project was terminated. This replacement was sought out by the Citibank Group, the owners of the property, and are proposing this new project with a new partner for you. So with that, our principal planner, I'm sorry, our senior planner, Mr. Kiesel, will briefly outline and then turn over to the development team.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor Sinanian, members of the City Council. Roger Kiesel again with Planning Division.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to open a public hearing.
Let's open a public hearing, please. Sorry.
Century West Partners, the proposed developer is requesting approval of a combined Stage One, Stage Two design for the Citibank project located at 201 West Lexington Drive. The entire site is about 121,000 square feet in area, and basically bounded by Lexington, Central Avenue, Milford, and Orange Streets. The project is a proposed mixed-use with commercial, live-work, and just standard multifamily units. There are a total of 489 residential units, and that includes both the standard units as well as the live-work. Approximately 9,600 square feet of commercial space. The commercial and residential units are contained in four buildings, and the project will have 740 parking spaces. The buildings will be up to six stories in height, six stories, 76 feet in height. And the site plan, to create the four buildings, the site plan features two intersecting paseos, which each quadrant has a building. And where the paseos intersect, there's a sort of a little event space in the, in basically the center of the project. The project will be constructed in two phases. Phase one will be the southern part of the site, phase two, the northern part. Staff believes that the project is consistent with the DSP, Orange Central, standards and guidelines, and recommends approval of the project with the condition contained in the staff report, which addresses substantive modifications to the project design. I'll now turn it over to Kevin Farrell of Century West Partners to further go over the project.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Weaver?
According to the downtown specific plan, how tall could the building be at this location?
I believe it could be up to 12 stories.
12?
Yeah, let me double-check, but I...
And this is six, half of what is allowed by right.
Correct. Let me double-check, and if it's different, I'll...
It's 12 or more, I know that.
Okay.
Worth noting, sir, it's a very good point, sir, that the previous project submitted was, I believe, eight stories.
Yes.
Well, I have a question before the gentleman begins. What effect would a vote on a moratorium this evening have on any of the, any of the items, except from design? We're talking about design only today, is that correct? If there were a discussion on density and on other issues, open space, would this project be subject to any moratorium and any future adjustments to the DSP?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to have to give a lawyer answer, and it says it depends, it's going to depend on what it is the council, if the council approves a moratorium, what it approves, whether it approves projects that have been entitled or not. As the project before you is for design approval, which is the only discretionary entitlement that the project would need before proceeding to building permits. So it is within the council's purview to include projects that are entitled but not necessarily permitted. Obviously, I think Mr. Cho and I will have some thoughts on that tonight, but that would, it's going to depend on whatever it is the council approves. If the council approves a moratorium affecting only those projects that, or grandfathering all those projects that have received their entitlements, then the moratorium wouldn't apply to today's project.
Yes, Mr. Ryan?
Can I get a clarification? So if, if the project is in the pipeline, it would not be affected by, as described in the ordinance?
Correct, and it's going to, it will depend on how the council defines the pipeline, if the council approves the ordinance. So that's the best answer I can give at this point.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Farrell, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Century West Partners, and thank you for giving us this time to present our vision, new vision for the Citibank site. Before I give you just a brief presentation, I'd like to introduce the rest of the development team that's here today with us. Michael Sorczynski is the Partner in Charge of Century West Partners. We've got Wade Killifer, owner of Killifer Flamang Architects. Suchi Shu is our Lead Designer with Killifer Flamang Architects. Scott Baker is a landscape architect with Melendrez Group. We've got Jono, everybody knows Jono, right? Traffic engineer.
Oh, never heard of him.
And, and of course, John Harrington is here, and he represents Citibank.
Let me just stop you for one second. How long will you take on your presentation, your jointly?
Probably less than five minutes.
Ten minutes.
Ten, is that too long?
Fifteen minutes, okay.
We're under 20.
Okay, let's start with 15 minutes.
I can talk fast.
Thank you.
Okay, Century West Partners, it's relatively new venture. We started four years ago. It's a partnership between Cypress Equities and Fife Field Development. We joined four years ago to focus on apartment development in the better submarkets of Los Angeles. Through the course of the two companies' existence, we've built over 8,000 apartment and condominium units, and over 8 million square feet of office space. So, very experienced team. As Scott introduced, we're presenting a downsized version, a downsized development to replace the previous project that you saw a little bit over a year ago. When we started planning on this, planning for this project, we had three main goals. Number one, create great architecture with high-quality building materials. Number two, create great public open space for the community, not just our residents, but for the community. And number three, of course, we need to facilitate an orderly move for Citibank from their existing facility at Central and Milford into a new facility that we're going to build for them as part of the first building of our four-building development. I'll talk a little bit more detail about how we achieve those three goals, kind of, I'll do it in reverse order. Citibank, as you know, is currently in a facility at Central and Milford. We're going to build a new facility for them. In order to do that, we're going to temporarily relocate their ATM drive-throughs, we need to make sure we provide parking for their employees and their customers while we start our first couple of buildings. Then we have to complete the buildings, get them moved into that building, open their new drive-through facility, make sure we have all of the parking open and accessible for all of their customers, and in essence, we need to make sure that we have a seamless transition from their current facility to the new facility. That's probably Citibank's number-one goal, as it should be, to take care of their customers' employees. But we've got a couple other goals. As I said, our second goal was to create great public open space. And Scott from Melendrez will talk in detail about how we're doing that, but many of you have seen the, seen the plan, and, you know, we've got this, the paseos, and Roger talked about these intersecting paseos. And I was thinking about that, I've always been a little bit uncomfortable with that term on this project. And so this morning, I went on my iPad and Googled paseo, and it's, and it's, the definition, at least according to Merian Webster, is a pedestrian promenade, which, you know, yeah, we're creating a pedestrian promenade, and it's going to provide access to the live-work units and retail spaces along that space. But I think it sells it short a little bit, because what we're trying to do is create a destination, not a pass-through. I mean, yeah, people can cut through, but we're trying to create a destination, a place where people in Glendale meet. Not just our residents, but office workers can meet for lunch. We've got a nice, large intersecting point that's, that can be programmed for any sort of event, from, you know, movie night in the park, to being the place where they start and end 5K races, to, you know, a book fair. So we're trying to create a great destination in this public space. I think our plan does it in a way that will greatly benefit the central area of downtown Glendale. So, but our first and foremost goal was creating great architecture with high-quality building materials. And really, I'll tell you, the minute we walked into City Hall to talk to staff about this site, and then ultimately, some of the council members, was, became obvious that we need to raise the bar in terms of architecture and materials in Glendale in order to get this project approved. And as we move through this design process, it became more and more evident to us that raising that bar helps everyone, it's going to help us too. It's a competitive market, all of our projects have high-end amenities, and, and this project will even have higher-end amenities, everything from, you know, a dog grooming station, to a Monster Fitness Center, to, you know, bike facilities, including, you know, a workbench and place where people can maintain their bikes. But it's the high-end architecture that's going to help make this project blend into Glendale the way I think that exceeds your expectations. I think, so, so in summary, we've got a downsized project from the previous project, we've got a project that's paying the new parks fee, so that's a difference from the previous project. Also, we've got a four-building campus that we're creating that will blend into downtown, and I think I'll turn it over to Wade Killifer to present the architectural in more detail. Just by way of introduction, though, I'll say that Killifer Flamang Architects has designed over 150 residential projects. And they know how to design high-quality projects, and they know how to create great spaces for residences and great spaces in the community. One of their best attributes is seamlessly tying a new project in with the existing urban fabric. They also share our priorities of sustainable design, and Wade will talk about some of those features as well. So I'll turn it over to Wade.
Good afternoon, Wade Killifer, Killifer Flamang Architects from Santa Monica. This is my associate, Suchi Shu, who actually did all of this great design. And Scott Baker from Melendrez, our landscape architect, that'll finish up our presentation with a discussion of the landscape. We're really pleased to bring this really exciting project before you. As a way to start, let me orient you, I think you know the site as well as anyone, but we are north of Lexington. We are, we have Orange on the east, Central on the west, and Milford to the north. Currently on the site is a six-story building, 74 feet tall, that's about the same height as our building will be. Kaiser Nine Stories is north of us, about 125 feet tall across Milford, and a six-story, 85-foot parking lot and production center are here to the east. To the south is Lex on Orange and the Armenian consulate, and Central is on our west, which is a major highway, and there's also a six-story office building there. We have a corner of the site of the block, which is not ours, which is the existing Citibank building that'll, branch that'll be moved into our site as we get it done. We fully comply with the downtown specific plan, the Orange Central District that calls for new urban mixed-use housing. We are not requesting any variances or exceptions, not in parking, height, or open space. Our replacement project is six stories with 489 units, and is smaller in scale and density than the previous scheme approved on the site, which was eight stories and 540 units. Now for some numbers. We propose to build a campus with four buildings, 1, 2, 3, 4, over shared underground parking. There's about 8,000 square feet of commercial space spread among the three corners. There are vehicular access to and from the parking happens on all, all four streets, so there's no jam-ups on any particular street. There are 24 live-work units activating the paseos on the ground level, and 465 apartments above, ranging from 600-square-foot studios to 1,000-square-foot penthouses with, two-bedroom penthouses with mezzanines. To support these uses, we are proposing 740 parking spaces, 32 more than required. There are also 123 long-term and 29 short-term bike spaces, and 489 storage units in the parking garage. Again, the site is just about three acres, and we will be providing almost 40,000 square feet of common open space, which is about a third of the site area. So, we're providing about that much open space. We will have 50,000 square feet of private open space and 10,000 square feet of indoor amenity space. As I mentioned, we've designed, divided the site into four buildings, divided by broad landscape paseos, which Scott will talk about in a minute. Each of the four buildings has a distinctive design with different material and color palettes. We're proposing a mix of stone tile, porcelain tile, basalt tile, terracotta, and Trespa panels for the exterior finishes. Trespa is a decorative, high-pressure, low-maintenance, long-lasting, energy-efficient, compact laminate that comes in a wide variety of colors and textures. All four buildings have floor-to-ceiling windows and large balconies. We want to promote a high quality of life, and we're providing, as Kevin was saying, four large courtyards, two swimming pools, seven roof decks, a bike kitchen, a yoga studio, a two-story gym, a spa, a business center, a party room, a game room, screening room, dog wash area, a dog run area, multiple barbecues, and an outdoor fire pit. We're also providing solar panels to heat the pools, drought-tolerant landscaping, LED lighting, durable locally sourced materials, a bank of electric charging vehicles, electric charging stations, and zip car spaces. Next slide, here's the central elevation view, Building A on the right, and you can see the warm wood, Trespa panels in variegated colors. Building D, this is Building A, Building D on the left has graystone tile with an accent color. Under the fly roof is a roof deck up here, looking out at the mountains. Here is a night view showing the accent light that we're proposing. We think this is going to be a really wonderful place in the neighborhood. Next slide, here's the corner at Central and Lexington with the new 4,500-square-foot Citibank, with 20-foot ceilings here, and a large roof deck up on the corner. So all the corners have these big roof decks with, with views. Moving counterclockwise around the site, here's the Lexington elevation view. Building A is on the left, has the Trespa wood grain again that you saw before. Before, when you saw this, it had sort of some blue panels, and we took your advice and moved on from there. You can see the main paseo entrance right here, there's an amphitheater there, a cafe in there, and this is a place for performances or hanging out, and it also helps us deal with the grade change over the site. The next slide, we're at the Lexington Orange corner, showing the commercial space in the corner. And the next slide is the Orange elevation view. Building on the right is terracotta, like the brick buildings that are here in town, and then we have the porcelain tile building here. Now we're at the Orange Milford view, there again the terracotta, nice warm material. And then the Milford view is next, and I'm moving around the site. And now I'll bring up Scott to talk about the landscaping and the paseos. Thank you.
How are we doing on our 15 minutes? As was already talked about, this, this project encompasses almost a full city block. And so the importance of the landscape is really about, not just, you know, softening the project, but it's about stitching it into the fabric of the city. It's important for the sense of identity for the project, it's about fulfilling the needs of, of the residents, as well as the community and the neighborhood as well. And we're going to do that through a series or a hierarchy of open spaces of different scales. The first is really that of the streets. I mentioned there's four streets that define this parcel, all are important. And so we want to deliver a high-quality, tree-lined street scape that meets the design guidelines, but as important as it is to sort of wrap the property, it's about stitching it into the fabric of the downtown that's already been taking shape. The second piece is the paseo, or walk street, or passageway, in a variety of different, different names for the same thing. And it is, as Kevin suggested, this public walk that moves from Orange through to the center of the project, and then down to Lexington. We see this as a unique opportunity to really mix residents, but also business and retail patrons, all in one space, the idea of creating a pedestrian precinct. Typically, we don't see these things in our city happening in the same place. We have to go to older towns like Virginia, for example, where we get these great streets that have the cafe, the apartment door, the artist's studio, all happening side by side. And we don't see that as much anymore, and we see this as an opportunity to really create that type of...
It's okay, five more minutes.
All right, that type of experience. Even the alley walkways in Pasadena, for example, they're typically all retail. We're looking for this to be a mix of uses that, that really defines it as a destination as opposed to a passageway, as Kevin said. The walk street is really comprised of three main components that I wanted to outline very quickly. One, this idea of the steps on Lexington. Really, they're one part grand entrance, one part amphitheater, one part café terrace here at the corner. And it's about creating this, this sense of address, and really creating the new meeting place for this part of downtown. We see this as the place where people are going to come and hang out and spend time, and whether it's sitting in the sun, whether it's socializing with friends, this becomes a real destination and hangout. We have an image of it here. So the café is sitting in the back, it's south exposure, we've got great sun, we see it being anchored by large mature trees. It's at a location where we're actually off the parking garage below at this point, so we have terra firma, and we create a great entry and great sense of address for the project. The second piece is the, is the actual garden walks that, that come from both Orange and from Lexington. And again, we see these as a place where we're mixing different types of, of people, again, residents, people who are there to visit some of the live-work opportunities or the café. Unlike a residential project, a pure residential project, the units that align this, this walkway really rely on the open space out in front. It is their front door. This is how people are going to be coming to their businesses, whether it's an artist's studio or professional services office. So the idea of creating an open space that has a balance of landscape beneath an airy canopy of trees, lots of flexible seating, different opportunities for people to sit and hang out informally, and this idea of blurring between, say, café uses and then other uses throughout the paseo. One point I want to mention that we're, the idea of playing up landscape in this space is very important to us. We're thinking about sycamore down at the southern end at Lexington, sort of large significant trees, perhaps a large oak that defines the entry coming in. And because these two walk streets have very different exposures, looking at Marina Strawberry Tree in the east-west direction that can handle the shade and create the right sense of scale in there, and perhaps Palaverde in the north-south direction that'll give us some, some, some shade, in fact, from the sun that we're expected to have in that The third piece is really the paseo, or excuse me, the plaza that happens at the intersection of these two walkways. We see this as really, in many ways, the town square of this block, and where we see all the different activities happening. It's a little hard to make out in this slide, but as Kevin mentioned earlier, it could be certainly a place where there's performance, where there's music, a small celebration, but we also see it as really the central point or the hub for a book fair, a small farmer's market that might extend down the paseos in either direction. And that, from a size point of view, we estimate it could handle, you know, 2 to 250 people at a given time with the right event. For reference, this room's roughly 20 by 60, that space is about 60 by 60, so the length of this room and roughly three times the size. So we see that as being a fairly generous space, and really the, the sort of center or hub of not only the way the buildings are configured, but also the social life of the overall composition. Moving up, the idea of the residential courtyards. If the paseo and those walkways are really the town square, the courtyards are the private gardens within the project. They have different amenities, swimming pools, barbecues, fireplaces, those types of things. They're really the outdoor living rooms for the residents, and it's about meeting the needs of residents and the demographics we expect. People want to live beyond the walls of their unit, and so we find these to be an important asset to residents who are looking to live in an urban, urban, urban environment. And then finally, there are eight roof terraces that are at the top of the building. We're fortunate enough to boast perfect climate, great evenings, and in this location, mountain views... views and city views. So the idea is to really take advantage of these perches atop the building. It's something that is sought after in urban living, and we have the environment to create wonderful environments that might have fireplaces, but smaller scales. We've gone from street to paseo to courtyard and now to rooftop terrace where maybe two or six people might gather in one of these terraces. And that really gives us this range and hierarchy of open space that I talked about at the beginning. And so with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Curious, that roof terrace on the southwest corner, what approximate dimensions on that?
On the southwest corner, Souchi is the...
Lexington and Central.
Thirty by forty.
Forty?
Well, it means...
No, you're not on...
So exactly.
Yeah, but you have to get by the microphone. Roughly thirty by forty, so comparable to half of this room.
Okay.
Is that it? Yep. Any questions?
I have some.
Mr. Najarian?
I'm not sure who can answer it. Did I understand that that corner of Central and Milford is not part of the project where the current bank is located?
That's correct.
Why isn't it? And who owns it? And what can be put there? It's going to be right in front of your building. I mean, when you're talking about that corner exposure, what... Tell me a little bit more about that.
All I can add is that it's not owned by Citibank, and so we're not acquiring that parcel. There's a different owner than Citibank.
So...
So it's not part of our project.
So what could possibly be built there? What's the zoning and what would be... Would the structure remain? Does... Can someone...
Well, at this point, the structure, from what we understand, is going to remain. The zoning is the same as this zoning. However, the scale of the project that would be dedicated to that site, if anyone ever decides to redevelop, that would be different because the economies of scale and the amenities that can be afforded to a larger project will probably not be afforded there.
I don't know. I just see... How do you feel about that as a planner?
Well...
A great, you know, project, but a lot of work has been put into. But right in front of it, you've got a fairly small parcel that you have no idea what could be put in, or...
You know, as a planner, obviously, if this was part of the project, it would make the project a little bit more complete. However, we don't control the free market trends and what we can hope for the future to be something that will be compatible and not necessarily out of scale if something ever comes forward.
But it wouldn't... It's not likely that you would see a spire type of building here. It's because the footprint would be so small. It probably gets repurposed as either a commercial building or as a restaurant in all likelihood, or somehow gets enveloped by this project. But by that point, again, I don't know how you tie that in. I think your instinct is probably right on.
From what we understand, the ownership of that property is really complicated with several leases and back leases, and that's something beyond our control.
Okay. You know, whatever goes... This will be a lead into a question. Whatever goes there, you know, I think part of our responsibility of running the city is that it be managed properly, it be maintained properly, that it not change hands too often. And although that's not directly related to design, I think that it is an appropriate area of inquiry at this point. As you know, Century West, there's been a... Just an incredible gold rush of development in Glendale at this point. From what I can see, rates, rental rates are not at equilibrium. Let's put it this way, that the rates currently charged at some of the projects immediately adjacent were a little bit too ambitious when they were set. The problem with that is if those rental rates are not achieved, it may not meet the business plan and the pro forma that you have developed and clearly accompanied with your experience. Although you may have the size to weather some storms, oftentimes, the choice is to sell the property, and it goes through hands a few times. Can you tell me what sort of rental rates are forecast for some of the units there? Yeah, if you could obviously tie it to different square footage units or per square foot...
And I'm sorry, because I really don't have the rental rates memorized. I know that we have been modeling rents consistent, obviously, with the project directly across the street, Lexon Orange. So, you know, but I don't have the... I just don't have the chunk prices or rental rates.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of like the Blue Angels. You know, there's one lead, and everyone follows that lead. If that lead makes a mistake, the rest of the squadron goes down too. So, I mean, are there any independent, aside from just looking at Lexon Orange, are there any independent studies that you've done that would justify the rates that you plan on charging?
Oh, yeah. We do independent market studies before we buy any property. Our lenders and partners require it. And we've done that in this case.
See, my fear... Here's my fear, that you're going to try and get $3,000 for a two-bedroom unit, and maybe a few of them will be taken, and maybe you offer incentives, 13th month free or free move-in, whatever that is. But then, as the economy sours, as perhaps the demand for this type of residential living is taken up by, you know, there's 3,000 units ahead of you that are going on the market with the same type of, not exactly the same amenities, but the same type of unique lifestyle building with pools and rec rooms and all that. What's going to happen to your project if those 3,000, or what your target rents that you set are not achieved? I, as a city council member, don't want to have a white elephant sitting there, or nor do I want to have it rented at, you know, drop, fire sale pricing. So can someone talk to me about that?
Yeah, if I may, Michael Zoriczynski. Look, we've been doing this for many years, right? We're, between Steve Feifeld and myself, we've been developing for over 30 years. And obviously, when we take on a project of this magnitude, a very important project, we look at a lot of things. We've looked at supply. We've looked at demand. We've stressed our numbers 100 different ways. We employ pretty sophisticated financing methods that allow us not to overly leverage our projects, okay? We don't put high-leverage debt on our deals. We stress the rents down very significantly. And look, the reason we've been in business for 30-plus years is because we do that. And if we weren't 100% comfortable with this project, with the type of financing and the rents and the pipeline and the demand studies that we've done, we wouldn't be standing here today. Because at the end of the day, it's my name on that personal guarantee, it's my partner's Steve Feifeld's name on that personal guarantee. And so this is what we do. And we wouldn't be here if we were not 1,000% comfortable. Because we expect that there will be hiccups in the market. Interest rates aren't going to be at 3%, you know, for the next five years or 10 years. We know that rents may soften over time. But we're in it for the long term, you know, on all these deals. When we look at a project like this, you know, this is not a fly-by-night project. This is a timeless design with timeless interior finishes. And we're in it for the long haul. So if there's a flip in the market two years and three years down the line, we expect that, and we plan for it. And we'll be here.
Is that your forecast for the first hiccup, two years down the line?
Possible.
Do you don't see one coming sooner?
We could flip a coin on that one. I don't know.
Okay, those are all the questions I have at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
While you're there, what are the unit sizes? I mean, not, I mean, the actual square footage, not... I was looking, I couldn't find it in the report, I'm sorry.
It's ranging from 600-unit studio to 1,100 square feet of penthouse unit with two-bedroom. The average size is 720 square feet.
Okay. How does that compare to Lexon Orange? Do you know? Does anybody know?
Similar size.
Similar, okay. And then I have a question for whoever the planning staff or urban designer who did the design review. Is that Mr. Loomis? If you could just introduce yourself for the folks at home who aren't regular viewers.
Alan Loomis, Principal Urban Designer, the City's Planning Division.
So one of the complaints that I've heard about some of the new projects is the design. And I just wanted you to comment on what you thought in terms of the quality of design, quality of materials. Do you wish it was better? Do you wish it was different significantly? What are your thoughts? Is this going to be a building that's going to be built and it's not going to really look like the renderings? It's going to be shabbier? Do you like it, but don't you like? All that.
It's a pretty open-ended question.
Let me just tell you, the reason I'm asking is because there are people who don't have a problem necessarily with development, but maybe are criticizing some of the designs that we've allowed. And since this hearing is a design review hearing, and that's really all we're here to approve, let's make that clear. Everything else, as far as I know, is by right. They're not asking for variances today. This is a by-right project that they can build. The only thing we're here for is design review. I want to know what you think. If there are... I know you made your recommendations, but are there some changes you'd like to see? Is there anything that you think could be better? I want to make sure that we have a building, at the end of the day, that we are proud of and the community is proud of. Do you think we're going to get that in these buildings?
I believe so. I think the number-one reason this project merits consideration is because of the quality of the exterior finishes. Most of the projects that we have seen and we have approved that are under construction, I would say are probably in the vicinity of, their exterior finish is probably 75% plus plaster, stuck-up plaster finish. This project, as they've rendered it, is probably more in the balance of 50% plaster to maybe 30, 40% plaster. The balance of the exterior finishes is generally stone, glass, metal, or the trespa or some sort of wood composite material. So in comparison to, say, the Lexon Orange, which is largely a plaster building, just different shades of plaster with the railings giving that different kind of texture, whether it's metal or kind of composite wood, here you're going to see the facades are largely wood with glass railings.
And what about the interior designs? One of my concerns with some of the buildings is the unit size, which I think a lot of people don't mind the smaller units, but I'm not seeing as much of the mix of larger units and, you know, bigger apartments for those, for people who want larger apartments. Do you feel like at this size that we're going to be getting that?
My understanding from talking to various developers is that they generally do put a lot of energy and cost and money into the interiors because unlike the exterior of the building, they can actually get a value and a kind of extra five cents on the dollar for their rent if they do granite countertops and higher-quality stainless steel appliances. So they're generally more committed to doing the quality finishes on the interior than they are in the exterior, because that's actually a value that they can get in terms of their rents. Likewise, with the amenity space, whether it's the pools or the roof decks or the landscaping, that's something that tenants will experience on a day-to-day basis. And that tends to be where developers are willing to put dollars into, in contrast to the exterior. It seems like they're generally willing to cheapen the exterior at the cost of the interior. And I think the value of this project is they're taking the exterior to another step, I believe, because they've seen many other projects come onboard in front of them, and they need to distinguish themselves in a marketplace.
So this is a replacement project for one that had previously approved. How many units did that previous approval have?
Five. Yeah, 500, some change.
So this one's about 100 units less.
Correct.
As a planner, does that bother you, that reduction in density? Would you rather see a denser project there?
Not necessarily, no. I think the real issue is the quality of the project. And to answer your question about, also about the unit size, generally in the downtown specific plan, we have said we want a certain kind of exterior appearance and shape of the buildings and quality of finishes, and what, we'll let the free market decide what makes the most sense to put inside those buildings, provided they meet the criteria of the city from what they look like on the exterior.
So let me ask the developer, just out of curiosity, why aren't we seeing projects with 3,000-square-foot units? I mean, there's got to be a market for people who are leaving single-family homes but are used to the space and have a lot of stuff and... You've done the market analysis and...
Well, I'm, as an architect that designed an awful lot of buildings, if you design a 3,000-square-foot apartment, you're going to need to get $6,000 or $7,000 a rent for it, and that's just too much for the rental market. So it's another reason why units are tending to get a little smaller now, not in this project, but in the marketplace, is because the absolute rent is an absolute rent, which is not dependent on square footage. So if you're getting $2 a square foot for rent on a 600-square-foot unit, that's 1,200 bucks. That's an affordable rent for somebody that's working hard. But if you are getting a 3,000-square-foot unit, and that just is out of the ability of people to pay for a rental apartment. Is that helpful?
Do you see the condos being larger units generally?
Well, right now, in my world, we're not building condos. I think we will be, to answer the other question, depending on where the bubble is. But we will be probably in a couple of years, but we're not, no one's building condos right now.
Okay. Quick point on the larger units question. You know, what we're seeing out there, and we're obviously doing a lot of research, there really is, you know, the whole move towards urbanization has, people, the demand for units has become for smaller and smaller units over time. And the idea with these buildings is that the amenities are so tremendous in these buildings that people would rather take a smaller unit and spend a lot of their time hosting others, socializing with their fellow, you know, apartment dwellers in these common areas. And so there really isn't a huge demand or much at all, quite frankly, for the real large units. And so, and we're seeing that everywhere. In fact, you know, these units here are probably some of the largest I've seen out there in the city, going to places like Santa Monica and downtown Los Angeles, and the units just keep shrinking more and more because the demand's not there, because your typical renter's going to want to go and hang out on the roof deck or entertain in one of the private barbecue areas that we'll have for them, or go, you know, play PlayStation with their friends on, in our game room, or go to our indoor golf range with their buddies and, you know, hit some balls. And so those are the, that's really what people are after right now.
Okay, thank you.
But does, let me ask you a follow-up question then. So that sounds that, then, that these units aren't really intended for families. Families with children, because they, you know, it's hard to be outside of your apartment and constantly be enjoying the amenities when you have children, it's just a fact.
Well, the kids will enjoy the amenities, but, you know, there will be some families in these apartments, but for the most part, you know, families, young families will come in and maybe a family with one or maybe tops two children. Ultimately, they end up moving up to a condominium or a townhouse or a small home, you know...
And I'll tell you, the reason I ask that question is because there's a sentiment out there that building consistently these type of and these-sized units in Glendale is versions of this, A, intentional, and B, who cares, unintentional, end result is all that matters, squeezing families out of Glendale. And considering the fact that there are tens of thousands of apartment units, especially in South Glendale, that house families, I mean, there are apartments that families live in. I mean, I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm a little nervous about this trend of apartments becoming really small and people, oh, all you do there is sleep. I mean, just go out there and enjoy the amenities. It's just, I mean, I've lived in an apartment for a long time, so I'm a little worried about that.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I can tell you is this particular project is 5,200 square feet on the average larger per unit than typical projects we're seeing out there. So we really did consciously step it up and try to do larger units and more mix of larger units in this particular project.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
Yeah, I have a question about the passeos. And I know in the DSP, a lot of the construction, the developments call for passeos that cut through. And I'm concerned that there isn't one that cuts through from, I don't think it is, you have an L-shaped paseo, I believe, that cuts through from Orange to Central, or was that like impossible to do?
I think there's a couple of issues there. One, nothing's impossible, certainly, but I think we were focused on making sure that this became a place, not so much the cut-through or the pass-through. And so, but that notwithstanding, I think the other part of it was that missing parcel in the northwest corner. And, you know, if we were to pass through, you're generally reliant on what that parcel becomes or whatever. So passing through a parking lot or adjacent to a parking lot may not be the most desirable experience. So part of it was to maximize the experience. What's the quality of the space? And I think there's also a desire that while it's open all day long for public and residents, it's also very much sort of the, you know, the square for the residents in the evening... it's also very much sort of the, the, you know, the square for the residents in the evening, where it becomes sort of the gathering place, the front yard. So having some level of containment at certain hours was also desirable.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions of the developer. So who's doing the interior work, interior design work?
We haven't, we haven't selected our interior designer yet.
Okay.
We're interviewing several.
Okay.
Including the, the team that worked on the project formerly known as ISIS. Really liked the product there.
Okay, very good. And my second question is sort of a rhetorical one. On the renderings of the building are quite pleasing. They're very nice. They're, they're nice to look at. I would hate for the, the project, if and when it's commenced and eventually finished, not to look like what it looks like right now, and on the renderings, because, to be honest, this is what we expect in Glendale now, like, the best stuff, the, the good finishes, the expensive finishes, not stucco, and things that, that are timeless, things that invite, things that are attractive and inviting, and, and say something about our city. Do you think these designs say that now? I'm, I'm just hoping, you know, at the end of the day, when, when it's done, it should look like this.
I agree, and big trees.
Well, that, that's coming.
I have another question for you. What is the, what is the railing material for the?
It'll be a mix. Some, some of the buildings, especially the street-facing facades, will have glass. Some will have metal.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
The rendering on this particular pamphlet is, there's the blue. And now it's, on this one, it's a faded law, did you say limestone, or?
It's actually a different color of trespa that's supposed to complement the adjacent building. We've got a lot of negative feedback on the blue building with the metal panels, and so we, we sort of peeled that back, rethought it, wanted to make sure we had, and it won't be exactly this, but a lighter version of the dark trespa.
I guess I was the only one that liked the blue, huh?
No.
I liked it, just not so much of it.
It was too blue.
Just a lot of blue. I liked the blue, though.
Isn't this the first time we've seen this?
Yeah, but we had the designs. We had the designs for a couple of weeks.
We had the designs, yeah.
It was in Israel, so I missed that, I guess.
Okay, thank you. We have some speaking cards on this item. I'd like to invite Ann Gray, followed by Wade Califer, I think. Oh, that's you, you're good. All right, followed by Scott Baker. That was you, you're good.
I don't think I need to say anything, it's been said very well. Thank you.
Oh, great, well, all right, thank you.
Brevity.
Okay, and then Kevin, Kevin Farrell. We have no speakers. We're going to close the public hearing. And who'd like to go first?
I, I do have one, I guess, something I need to get on the record. I do practice law in the building at 500 North Central Avenue, and I am currently a leaseholder. I have approximately a little over one year left in the lease, and I earn no income from the leasing of that property. And therefore, after consultation with the city attorney, I feel confident that I do not have the conflict of interest that is discussed in the FPPC regulations and requirements. So I will participate in, I've, I've obviously been in the discussion, but I will participate in the final vote.
Okay, great. I'll mirror that statement, with the exception that my work address is at 431 North Brand, which is literally, I don't know, a couple, 20 feet, 30 feet away from the project, and I have the same situation. I have a lease that probably has two years left on it, and I don't draw any, any income from that lease. We went through this exercise with the previous project on this very location, so I thought that issue was cleared. Nothing's different about this project.
It is, it's just for disclosure purposes, but the analysis is the same.
There it is, it's out there. Who'd like to go first? Ms. Devine?
I'll go first. First of all, I, I just want to say I, I like the project. I think it's a terrific project. It's, I want to thank the architects and the developers for listening to our recommendations, except for the one about the blue. That one, I'm not real crazy about. It looks like, that's one of the things I don't like now, is, is the color, because now it's going to be very, it seems like it's going to be bland, and just like all the other buildings in the city, and I was kind of looking for a pop. Some of the things that I like about the building, the development, the four vehicular access points from each block, I think that's, that's really good, making egress and ingress easier. The event space, the L-shaped, the paseo is going to be very pedestrian-friendly, and I think that's terrific. And you've gone over and above the required square footage. Parking spaces are above. The, one thing that is scaring me is when you say, "You can have an event there with 200 people," and I'm wondering, where are we going to, where are they going to park in, in the events? So I, I hope that we have adequate parking there. Landscaping, I just want to say that the rendering shows mature trees. I would like to see that carried through to the finished product. I have to say, I went to a nursery to check that out, to see what can be done, and I know you're the expert, but I just want to say, I've heard some, I want to make sure that they're mature trees, three to five years old, drought-tolerant, and with large canopies. And I've heard some pros and cons on that, the fact that if you get mature trees, they sometimes don't do as well. But as I understand it, if you plant them before you do the concrete, give them a chance to take hold, they'll be fine. So I really would like to see, like, three- to five-year, mature, year-old trees right away, because if we want to make this pedestrian, we have to soften this hardscape, and that's what we have. And so I think these beautiful, mature trees would, would do just that. Dislikes, like I said, the not having a paseo which joins the two streets, Orange and Central, I, I was a little disappointed in that, and as I say, oh, and the front of the Citibank, that's a prominent corner. I think it should, it should look like a prominent corner, so I hope that you'll emphasize the landscaping and, and make that a beautiful corner. So those are my comments, and I'm absolutely approving the project.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Mr. Weaver?
Let's see. Now, this is six stories, and to the north of it is, what, a nine-story building? To the south is a six-story building? To the east is a, projected to be an eight-story building, I think. So this is not exceeding any of those heights, and it's well within the design purview, the by-right heights that they can put in. I have no problem, I, I saw the material board that's going in there at another site, and I had never seen that on any of our apartment buildings in Glendale so far. At another site, I was in a couple of the units, and there was an extremely busy thoroughfare outside the window, and I was standing there, and I could not hear a sound. So the insulation, whatever they're putting in, the quality of the windows and stuff, you know you're getting a, a good project. I, I know when the Couch of the Village goes out and the media does build theirs, there will be a passageway from Brand over to Orange, and from there into this paseo, so we'll have a straight pass-through mid-block, the whole, the whole way, which has to put one of those lighted crosswalks, so people going across don't get run over. The only thing I'm still trying to get my hands around, I don't care for the amphitheater. It's fronting on Lexington, which is a pretty busy street, and it's facing south. It's hard for me to visualize people sitting on those steps in the summer with the sun coming through. Even if there's trees there, it's going to be duff, and I don't know how, amphitheater usually, I know DreamWorks has one in theirs, we can sit on the concrete. I've never seen a show or anything put on there. I don't know what would go there. Personally, if, I was thinking of, instead of placing the amphitheater, I had a, a vertical wall from the street up to the paseo level, I put in a vertical water feature that would have water cascading down, a cooling element rather than anything else. I've tried to get my hands around size of the paseo, the open, and I, I saw the dimensions, and I can relate to that. I just wish there was more that could be done in widening the paseo, because if you put the entertainment, or whatever you're going to do, in the center of the two, east, west, and north, south, it's probably going to end up being a concrete circle, two, three feet high, where performers could stand on or play on it, people walking two paseos could see them. We have the one cafeteria, or, I mean, cafe, I don't know if that's enough to, to serve there. Printing is a little small. But the one coming from Lexington north, I've tried to look at how you could make that width bigger. But I guess, the way it's laid out, there'd be enough for people to stand down east and west, north and south, facing towards the center where the entertainment would be, so as long as it's not too congested with trees and stuff, making it hard to see the center, fine. Being able to sit outside in, in the evening on, in the paseos would be good. These live-work units, though, they'll be mainly, you live and you work there, they're not to draw people to, in terms of sitting outside in cafes, there's only one cafe that I see. So, like I said, I'm just trying to understand that more. I'm voting for it, but those are my only concerns, and I haven't raised it, because you're not, you couldn't give me any answers here today anyhow. It's just something I would suggest, in my opinion, look a little more at that, the people walking, where they're coming from, and how do you halt them? How do you make them stay in that area? That's a good question. That's fine, I'm for it. It's not excessive, it's doing what we designed, or into the downtown specific plan, makes, that meets the criteria, so, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Nigery?
Before I make my remarks, could the city attorney tell us, is there just one motion here before us? I mean, there's been no motion made, so I think we should frame our comments in relation to a motion.
Right, right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Nigery, there are two motions on this, part of this item. One is to approve the design review, and the other is to approve the instrument imposing covenants relative to the incentive.
Can someone discuss that? I don't think that was really discussed, or I missed it if it was.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of...
But what's that all, I mean, we're going to be voting on this, so someone should have raised that, I think.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the second motion is on the instrument imposing covenants, where a project takes advantage of one of the incentives offered under the DSP, that's Chapter 7, and there are a variety of incentives. This particular project is offering additional publicly accessible open space, which is more than 50% above what's required. In those instances, there are two options, in order to assure that that project is developed with that incentive included for the life of the project. That would be a development agreement, or an instrument imposing covenants that is recorded against the property, that specifically identifies the incentive being used, and I, and where that, those particular improvements will be located, and that's recorded against the property and runs with the land. So that's the second...
So it's the, it's the additional open space, 50% greater than what would otherwise be required.
Yes.
And what is the incentive that they receive for that?
What they're receiving is an additional .9 in FAR, so the maximum permitted by right is 3.0. They're slightly above that, so it's 3.90 is their FAR, and for that reason, they are required to enter into the instrument.
So if my math doesn't fail me, that's approximately a 33% increase in the density that they would otherwise be...
We could have the planning, planners confirm that math component of it.
A quarter if you're going down. It's 33 for going up.
But important to note that that's the floor area ratio, not necessarily the density of units.
Right. The, the base FAR is 3.0. They're requesting 3.9, and I believe, and I can confirm this in the, they can, they can, the max FAR could go up to 5.2. With the incentives.
So they could have gone to 5.2 with this incentive? And it's not, it's not the density, like you said, they could...
It's the floor area.
The open space incentive could give them 5.2 FAR?
Up to, correct.
All the incentives?
Well, that's what screwed up.
I'm sorry?
All the incentives together.
Yeah, that's what screwed up, and...
In this case, they've provided enough publicly accessible open space that they could get the maximum 5.2.
Just on open space?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, as I said, in not-so-eloquent terms, that's what screwed up with our codes. Where someone who can make an extra-wide paseo, promenade, pedestrian path into their buildings, serving their buildings, serving their residents, can get a huge increase in FAR. That's what's wrong, and that's what we're seeing tonight, hopefully for discussion on our moratorium that may involve reducing those incentives. I feel very uneasy voting on this project, discussing this project on the eve, it's not even on the eve, less than, oh, it's, you know, less than 60 minutes before a discussion on a moratorium is going to be discussed. This project is too dense, the city has had enough apartment buildings, it has enough growth to satisfy anyone's hunger for growth. We don't need the extra units. The traffic surveys, which are indicated, I take issue with. I know a little bit about traffic surveys, although I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know what A, Level A, B, and C mean, and according to this, in the near future, not even now, but in the near future, after all the growth, not including this building, is put in, almost all the intersections from Central at Broadway to Central and the freeway, and Brand likewise, are at Levels A and B. You know, that's wrong. We're not at Level A today. We're not at Level B today. And when the rest of the buildings get built out, believe me, we're going to be much more congested. Let's note one more thing, which isn't directly related to the design issue, that it was said that if we were to raise our parks and library impact fees to the fair, full-burdened amount, that no one would come and develop in Glendale anymore. Well, this project is subject to the full parks and library impact fees, and they are building, and they're building a sizable project. So over the last two or three years, when we've been discussing attempts to raise those fees to the fair and appropriate level, the hue and cry was, "Oh, well, no one's going to build a..." to build anymore. No one's going to develop anymore. Well, this project, which is coming a month or two after our fees were implemented, paying the full fees, sort of lays to bed any of those earlier comments. I promised my colleague that I wouldn't kick and scream too hard, but this is an important issue that people of Glendale are talking about, the overbuilding of Glendale. Glendale is being overbuilt. Enough is enough. I'm going to continue my position to advocate for the residents of the city of Glendale, today's residents, not tomorrow's residents, that are going to live in the 700-square-foot units, playing Nintendo, shooting, driving off the putting rain, driving off the tee, having parties up on the roof, and vote against this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Ms. Friedman?
Sure. Well, lots of things. First, let's be clear about what we're talking about, a few things. First of all, we're talking about design review for this building. That is the only thing that is in front of us, design review and approving the incentives. This building, by right, by the zoning which was approved many years ago, has a right to build a building of this size. We're not here to say, we cannot say yes or no to that by law. That's not what's in front of us. They are a by-right project and the only thing that we are here for is the design review portion. Changing incentives, changing fees, moratorium, absolutely, we're discussing that tonight, but that's not a discussion for now. And the moratorium discussion was only brought up, what, two weeks ago? This project's been in the pipeline now for months and months and months. So to say that they're somehow have sprung up out of the ether to take advantage of, to sneak in before a moratorium, it wouldn't be fair to subject them to that anyway, even if we vote for it, because they've been, they've been working on this now with the city for months and months and months. So I'm not, I don't feel that that, they should be penalized for that, the investment, the sizable investment that they've put in, in this property and in this project. It wouldn't be fair for that to come under that anyway. This is here for a design review hearing, period. That's the only thing that is in our purview by law. Secondly, this is not really, this project is new, but this site is not newly in play. There was another project that was approved on this that was far denser than this project, what was over 100 units larger than this project. This is a replacement for that project. And people who are concerned about development should look at this project and say, thank goodness, it's this one and not that one, because this one will have a lot less impact. In terms of traffic, an apartment building, a new apartment building absolutely has more traffic than a site that has nothing on it. But an office building also causes a lot of traffic. And in fact, it's much more impactful traffic because in an apartment, in an office building, people tend to come and go at around the same time. You know what has a lot more of a traffic impact than an apartment building? A restaurant, where people are constantly coming and going. A retail space. What causes the most congestion in Glendale? It's our two shopping malls, the Americana and the Galleria. That's where you find the most congestion, not around a single apartment building, even a large apartment building. And we have a lot of them around town, not just in our downtown. I live off of Valley View. Valley View between Stocker and Kenneth has several large apartment buildings. There are large apartment buildings all along Glen Oaks. There are large apartment buildings all around the downtown. And there's, I've never had anyone complain about the excessive traffic around any single apartment building. Yeah, having new residents brings a certain amount of traffic in, but so does having an office building where people are coming in from all over. So does having new retail where people are coming in from all around the region to go shop at a store. Anything you put on a site that's of any size is going to cause traffic. An apartment building causes less traffic day in and day out than a lot of other uses. It just does. And the traffic counts show that. Jono, am I right? You want to nod, shake your head? He said yes, for the record.
But he shook his head.
He said no.
You said no?
No.
He said yes. He shook his head, but he said yes. Some people do that. Some people go, yes. Yes, I never understood it, but there's, a lot of people do that. Why do you do that? You're just confusing people.
It's from Bulgaria.
So yeah, if you wanted to keep this site a vacant lot, absolutely not a lot of traffic. But anything you're going to put there, and anything that's going to go in our downtown is going to be sizable, is going to cause traffic. But again, we're only looking at the design of this building. I take a lot of stock in staff. We have excellent staff. Alan Limas is a wonderful, licensed architect, I believe? No? Oh. Licensed urban designer. Do they literally license that? No. He's an urban designer, very experienced, and he's a lot of friends that are architects. And, you know, I trust our staff and having a lot of different materials makes a big difference on these buildings, especially the larger buildings. I do have a question for the landscape designer, landscape architect?
Sure.
You are licensed. Let's talk about the paseo, because I think that what's going to really make this project work is that paseo. Work or just be another big building, or be something that's really a big benefit to the community. So here are my concerns, and tell me if I'm totally off-base. Be honest. Is it too narrow to really be a destination? Is it going to be too much of just a concrete funnel? And I'm thinking of, we have a couple of retail locations that promised big, wonderful paseos, and they didn't really work. We have one that does, which is, you know, the Americana, which does work, but it's extremely large. So what do you think?
At the risk of referencing another city, I go back to the old Pasadena example, the alley walkway system, right? Very little landscape in there. Generally, most of them are narrower than this room.
True.
And they lead to places like where Gordon Beers used to be and whatever it is, right? Which is incomparable in size to what our corner knuckle is, generally speaking, that plaza space, give or take.
So those had destinations. Is this building going to have those kinds of destinations for people to really want to walk to? Is it going to really have that mix of retail that's going to make it something that, besides just walking through a residential building?
And see, I see it, yeah, I don't see it as being strictly a residential building. I think the cafe is an important piece to it. I think that those are very much in demand as places to linger. A lot of coffee shops, it's, you get a 15-foot sidewalk and a few tables and chairs and it's against the street. Here, I see us as having an opportunity for a layered kind of perch over the city, right? The paseo sits six, eight feet above the street at that point. So it's a really kind of wonderful perch overlooking the street. And I think the idea of activating the centerpiece, and it's a crossroads of both public and private coming together. It's a public paseo, it's a private courtyard, it's this idea of this intersection that can be programmed, that can be sort of this centerpiece, but it'd be important to activate that piece.
And what about what's inside? Is there going to be retail, things that are destinations on the inside of that paseo as well? I know you have live-work in there, but are there going to be places people want to go?
You know, in my mind, live-work, this should be, and when we say live-work, live-work's not just somebody who's, you know, an attorney or whatever, but it could be artisans. It could, we were talking about the fellow that's making custom iPhone cases and then selling them, right? It's in a live-work situation. The idea of actually creating a draw so that this becomes, A, for people looking for that type of space, this is the address for them. This is the best address for a live-work, where it's within a pedestrian precinct. Secondly, having the right mix of those uses that makes it an interesting space. I think of the main plaza in Chinatown, just north of downtown LA, where there's these really interesting one-off shops in there.
But could those shops, do you have the space for a shop like that and can they afford these rents? I mean, usually shops like that are in places like Chinatown because the rents are cheaper.
Right, but they're also sort of the, kind of unique, offbeat one-offs as well. And I equate that to being something you could accommodate through live-work. But again, I don't want to speak for the owner, but I think it is the mix and not just making it about front doors. I mean-
And then do you have enough comfortable seating, not just perching on large planter walls, but comfortable seating to make this a place? Are you, are you trying to get people to come in and sit down or are you trying to get them through here?
Sit down.
Okay, so are you going to have enough? Because I looked at the plans and I couldn't really tell if you had enough seating to really make this a gathering place?
I think, I see it as being curated seating, if you will, that it's not all the same, that there's different groupings. Part of what we were trying to avoid was the usual move where you've got building wall, you've got landscape, and then you've got the, you know, walk the gangplank down the center. The idea was, my partner refers to it as drunk walking, right? Where you just sort of meander and back and forth and through. And finding places to sit, not really saying where the cafe stops and where the other stuff starts. The idea of having it be a sort of a loose pedestrian precinct where people can just hang out and gather. It should be life, you know, life on the street, but we're creating a street here, a walk street.
All right. I mean, I love the idea of it. I wonder whether in practice it's really going to work. I mean, for a few things. Unlike Pasadena, you don't, in Pasadena, you don't have patios with people kind of looking down on you as you're in that space. It's a more private space. You also, in Pasadena, and the reason that you go through those alleys is because there are destinations there. There are things to explore, there are things to discover. And I question whether you're doing outreach and really intend, you said it's the market, but are you really going to be looking for those kinds of uses that will draw people into that space? Because no one's going to go down there if it's just because it's pretty, I think. Maybe some will. I mean, some might go down, some office workers will go there to have their lunch. But besides that lunch hour, if you really want to energize the space, you're going to have to have some destinations in there, right? I mean, even, maybe it's a gorgeous fountain people can sit around, you know? It could be things like that. It doesn't have to be retail. But I think it's important that you create those, whether it's a great retail, whether it's another great coffee shop, or whether it's a beautiful place to gather around, they've got to be in there.
I agree. I mean, again, it's programming, it's curating the right uses in there, not only just furniture and landscape and all those things. And I think it also depends on critical mass, too. I mean, the, you know, I'm being compensated by this owner, but this is also, but I want to say that, you know, as we look at projects, and my office is in downtown Los Angeles, and I keep saying, when are more developers going to create space, vest pocket parks, small paseos, within their development parcels, rather than going edge to edge? Thankfully, this is why we were drawn to this project, because they were looking to actually create something that brought the outside in, in a meaningful way. Yes, there's pieces that they need to do to make sure that it stays lively and activated, but as the city continues to grow, and it will grow, having these respits, this breathing room will become very, very important.
And in your material board, you showed some pictures of, you know, some beautiful fountains that were in the ground and lighting. Are you, are they willing to maintain that in the public space as well as the private space for the buildings?
Yes, in fact, the fountain, and I didn't touch on every little detail, but there's a fountain at the entry, from the orange entry. And the idea is, there's a whole story that I didn't get into, but this is the idea of a lot of the landscape takes its cues from, that's the water source. And then the sycamore that's down at the plaza by the cafe on Lexington is sort of the downhill run. So there's this sort of landscape narrative. And so the idea is that that water gives you white noise at the Orange Street entry and that it becomes sort of an interesting activated thing that's part of the public realm.
Okay, thank you. So what I would like, when someone makes a motion, is that as part of the motion, we sort of ask staff to make sure that the vision just as articulated as what's executed, because the plan, you know, maybe isn't, I don't know if the plan is so detailed, you know, as the, is what we just heard. Alan, are you, are you taking somebody, I don't know, yeah? Okay. And then the second thing is if there's a way to work with the applicant to try to come up with things that will energize the space in terms of uses and places, I don't know how you do that exactly. You know, it's their building, they're going to rent it as they see fit, but I hope there's a good faith effort to try to bring in tenants that will bring the public in. Like you said, not just the law office, you know, where someone's working out of their house, but something that's more public. You're nodding your head. So if you would work with staff, you know, I know retailers do target specific businesses sometimes. They look for a few types of businesses, like he was saying, the more eclectic artisan-type store. If there's a way of reaching out to that community and trying to bring them in, maybe even reducing rent for someone who's a great tenant, I would hope that you could work with staff. I mean, I would make that part of my motion, that you work with staff to do that, because I would hate for you to build this beautiful space and then no one ever goes in there because there's nothing to do except maybe eat a sandwich once a day. I think it will help your building certainly, if that really becomes a destination. Yeah? Okay, so bottom line, it's a replacement project, it's a lot less dense than the project that was there previously. And for that reason, and because I think it's a nicer design, I will vote for the project.
Thank you. And thanks to all my colleagues for their thoughtful comments, regardless of what their position is, of course. I notice some irony to this, not just this project, but the process. The further we've gone into this development process in Glendale, the better the project seemed to get. So the better they're getting, ironically, the more do we scrutinize them, which is a little counterintuitive, but I can sort of understand why that's happening. Yes, this project comes to us with the higher impact fees. And yet, we all, I think we all voted for the higher impact fees, but I think some of us voted for higher impact fees because we thought that's the right thing to do. Some voted for them because they thought that would stop development, period. And we're happy that it hasn't stopped development. Great. So higher impact fees, people still see Glendale as an attractive place, they're still willing to invest a lot of money to bring us high product development projects. Fantastic. I think we're all winners in this. This project is replacing another project which was supposed to go in here under the lower impact fees, which was 100 years denser than this project is. So again, we're winning on that point also. The design, a lot was said about it. I don't want to keep repeating the same things that my colleagues touched upon. It's really special. I really like it. Again, the fear is, as I expressed it and my colleagues expressed it, that the end product really reflects that which we see rendered on the drafts and also as it is being orally presented to us. Because if fulfilled to 100%, it's going to be a very exciting project and it's going to contribute a lot to that part of Glendale. If it's not, it would be sad. But I think we had this conversation with our planning director in connection to another project, and I was assured that staff has full control over how a project is progressing and when and if a project falls short of those expectations that council sets forth and planning department instructed with, you can step in and you can make the corrections or you can somehow stop the process. Yes, so we have that assurance, which is great. Not that I'm doubting the developer in any way, but what was it, the saying that Ronald Reagan used to paraphrase from Russian, "Daviray no praviray." Trust, but double-check. I think that holds true. By the way, some cultures in Bulgaria, when they do this, that means yes.
Yeah.
My in-laws are from Bulgaria, so I'm very familiar with this a lot. Fortunately, that means yes. So having said that, again, I think this is certainly better than what we currently have on that corner. I mean, it's just better. It's a better addition to our city. It's a fact. I mean, I challenged someone to say that, no, what we have there is so fantastic, we should keep it. It's worth preserving. It's great. No one said that. No one said that. And that means something. I mean, we're presented with the opportunity to make Glendale better. I really, truly believe that. I am troubled by the size of the units. This project, most other projects, again, I, you know, I, we like what we have in Glendale. We like having families in Glendale. This is a family city. But we like the young people, too. We like them married, unmarried, whatever it is. We like everyone, but not at the expense of families, not at the expense of, we're not trying to somehow squeeze families out. And that I am 100% committed to. And again, I'm hoping that this balance shifts soon and we see more condos or we see only condos, where families can own homes and still be downtown and still enjoy an urban lifestyle, but not in the confines of a 700-square-foot apartment unit. Those are my comments. Again, my colleagues really articulated a lot of their thoughts and that's all going to be taken into consideration by our planning department. Short of that, there is a, I think, is that an amended motion or is that the original motion now?
Mr. Mayor, those comments would be incorporated into the motion.
Incorporated into the original motion.
They're already in the motion or any council comments. The one condition, sounds like it wanted to be imposed, was from Councilmember Devine regarding the trees, and so whoever makes the motion to incorporate that as a condition.
Well, I would also make it a condition that staff works with the applicant to make sure that that vision of a destination paseo is achieved.
So we have a motion? Or do we have two motions?
There's two motions, but we don't have any motion on the floor at the moment.
Okay, so why don't we, who's going to come up with a motion?
I'll move 2A with all the other conditions.
I'll second.
Great. Let's have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
And Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
I'll move 2B.
Second.
Let's have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
And Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. And thank you to my colleagues and everyone who's here on this item. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
We adjourn.
We adjourn?
Second.
We adjourned at 4:40 PM.